This special session of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, December 6, 2016 in Room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent Schools and a non-voting ex-official member of the Board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Mr. Hines?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Ms. Seelinger?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 2.01 is approval of the ginist in action on Mr. Munoz.
There are no changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second?
We've moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 7.01, approval of the school district property taxes payable in 2017.
15.
Seventeen. Yes, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, and Brenda Lewis, Assistant Superintendent, will brief us on this item.
Good evening, Board members. Our purpose tonight is really to do a look back on the 15-16. We'll have the actuals of how we finished with that budget and then look forward on our levy setting that impacts the 2017-2018 school year. The first piece is quite a bit of good news. We actually finished with our unassigned general fund balance of $16.1 million. And this was $3.3 million better than we had forecasted. And there was a variety of reasons why that happened. First of all, we came in about $2.4 million less in salaries and benefits than we had projected. And that's really a combination of new staff coming in with salaries lower than we had projected and lower than the staff that they were replacing. And also, we had a difference in benefits. We really try to predict where people are going to fall with respect to the benefits, but we're not able to do that with 100% accuracy because people can choose from two different plans and they can also choose if they want to have a single or family. So, we saved about $2.4 million there. The other piece was we had a pretty kind winter and a pretty kind summer. So, we were able to save a combination of $700,000 in our utilities, less than we had budgeted. And then, our fuel prices continue to be lower, so we're seeing savings in transportation. So, that utilities and transportation combined saved us about $700,000. As you know, we had a clean audit report that we had presented on November 15. We also refinanced debt with your approval on November 17, saving us $671,000. We often talk about the tax base in Rochester. We are a community that sees increasing tax base. We saw an increase from $10.9 billion to $11.8 billion in the total tax base, which is an increase of 7.8% in our city. Tonight, we are going to overview our current year's budget. We're going to overview the proposed tax levy and then it'll be a time for public comments. Tonight, we are looking at briefing to talk about the December 2016 certified levy. That comes before you next Tuesday night, December 13, for that to be set. Then, that impacts taxes payable in 2017. And then, that's the revenue that comes into our district for the 2017-2018 school year.
Great. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the current year budget as we had mentioned. First off, I want to talk about the revenue budget. And this slide unfortunately has a few more numbers than I'd like it to have to be easy to read, but I'm going to try and dial your attention into about four main items here. First off, I want to talk about the general fund budget. That is the main operating fund of the school district. Last year, the approved revenue budget was $198 million. And we actually finished the year taking in about $199 million in revenue. Next year, or the current year that we're actually in, the revenue budget was set at $211 million. And I put an asterisk there because that seems like a pretty substantial increase. It is. It's over $11 million. And I just wanted to highlight a couple reasons why. First, the voters had approved a voter referendum last November, and that actually is part of the 2016-17 budget, so that's a good chunk of the increase. The other part of the increase there that I put down in the footnotes or in the, at the bottom of the slide there, it just says Minnesota Department of Education has clarified to the district, and all districts actually in Minnesota, that they want construction projects under $2 million per school site to be included in the general fund budget. So, that's a shift for us because we were previously accounting for our smaller repair projects in the building construction fund, because to us, that's where it made sense to put it. But they want all districts operating under the same guideline so that when we compare districts, they all look similar. And that's why you'll notice on the building construction line that the revenue budget has gone from $17 million to $400,000 for 2016-17. And then, also I wanted to point out the debt service revenue budget. It was $15 million last year and it's set currently at $10.5 million. And that's primarily because we did refinancing of bonds last school year, and we didn't have any intentions of doing that in the current school year, so that was not part of the original approved budget. So, overall, the school district's revenue budget's $281 million last year. The actual revenue was higher than that at $283 million. And then, the 2016-17 budget is set at $275 million. It's a very similar story on the expenditure side of the budget, which we'll talk about next. Again, the general fund, the approved budget was $209 million last year and we spent just under $202 million. One of the main reasons we did not fully spend the budget was we had borrowed the money for the new computers for student use last spring. And those computers weren't in until the summer, and so then they got paid out of the next year budget. So, they were approved to be spent in last year, but they actually got spent in the next year. The other issues, as we mentioned, were the savings and salaries, benefits, transportation, utilities. The approved budget there, again, $211.7 million for the current school year that we're in. I put an asterisk there, again, to remind us that that is a substantial jump up, but primarily because of those building construction costs being shifted there, as well as the voter-approved referendum being spent. The bottom line, total expenditure budget for the school district, $293 million last year. We actually spent under $278. And the approved budget for 16-17 is $276 million. The reserves, also known as fund balance, but this is money that's left over at the end of the year. It's either restricted by law to be spent on certain purposes, or as in the general fund, there can be an unassigned component there that we can use at our discretion. The ending balances last year in the general fund were $23 million. And we are estimating that if the revenues come in exactly as budgeted and the expenditures go out exactly as budgeted, we end at $22.6 million. So, we have a very structurally balanced budget this school year. Revenues are approximately the same as expenditures. And then, overall, bottom line, $67.8 million were held in reserves for all of our funds at the end of last year, and we're projecting that to be $66.4 million at the end of this school year, if everything plays out exactly as budgeted. I'll turn it over to Brenda.
So, next, we're going to switch from the 15-16 school year to looking ahead for our proposed property tax levy. The property tax revenue is really divided into three funds. And first, it's the general fund, and that's where we see the bulk of our expenditures: educational activities, instruction, student support programs, operations, maintenance, student transportation. The positions that you'll primarily see in this fund are teachers, paras, clerical, administration, contracted services, utilities, and supplies are the primary expenditures. Next, we have the community service fund, which we think of as community education. There, you'll see our early childhood, family education programming, school readiness, and our adult basic education. These are the programs that aren't associated with our K-12 programming. Then, we have our debt service fund, and that's our revenues and expenditures for the district's outstanding bonded indebtedness. And when a bond issue is sold, the school board must levy a direct general tax upon the property of the district for the payment of the principal and interest on those bonds as due.
So, I want to show this, how that actually plays out, then. The, splitting the levy up into the three different funds has shown the current year levy, so what we're paying in this calendar year right now, $37.7 million. That is general fund. $2 million is community ed fund, and $9.8 million was the debt service fund. So, a total levy of $49.5 million. The proposed or recommended levy for 2017 shows $42.9 million in the general fund, an increase of $5.2 million. So, it's primarily for operational type of expenditures. Community ed is very flat. Year over year, consistently runs right around $2 million. And the debt service is actually declining primarily because of those refundings, refinancings that we've done, so we're able to save money on interest, as well as just our payment schedule does not dictate needing $9.8 million next year. So, there's a savings there of about 8.5%. So, overall, bottom line, increase would be $4.4 million or 8.9%. And I think it's important to note here that 8.9% increase in the total revenues coming into the school district does not mean an 8.9% increase to every home and every business in our community. We're going to talk a little bit later on about how actually some of our properties would see a decrease in their levy next year. What I wanted to point out to you is the local referendum and tax base, and just kind of show what we're recommending there.
And this is what we had brought to you in September. So, it just reviews again how the taxes are determined, the tax base, et cetera. And this is an attachment that we used back in September.
I wanted to take the levy and slice it one other way that we haven't really looked at before. And this is kind of what I call the calculation method. I primarily put this in here because of some things I was hearing in the community about, "You adjusted my house value up so you could raise the taxes for the school." That's not true. First, we don't assess the value of the homes. Those are done by the county assessor, so we're hands-off on that piece. But second, I wanted to point out that the amount of levy that's actually determined by house values going up is that purple section. So, it's that 1% slice actually is calculated based on the value of the properties in the district. So, very small portion of the levy is actually represented by the value of the properties. Really, our levy is focused on pupil units or expenditures. So, pupil units on the blue side is really that operating referendum that's approved by the board, or approved by the voters, as well as the school board-approved referendum. It's basically taking the number of pupil units times the dollar amounts that are approved equals that amount of levy. Really, the only way for that to go down would be less pupil units. So, if we had less students, we could lower that part of the levy, or we could choose to under levy or not take the full levy that's been authorized. And then, the other part in red there, the 41% of the levy, is based on expenditures. So, there's many different formulas. There's a 38-page report that MDE prepares that goes through different types of approved expenditures, such as achievement and integration, long-term facilities, maintenance, so on and so forth, that determines if these expenses are approved, then they can go on the levy, and we can choose to levy or not levy them. So, really, if we wanted the levy to decrease in that part of the calculation, we would just have to approve less expenditures. And then, finally, if I hadn't confused you on the first two slices of the data, I wanted to throw up a third way of looking at it. So, same levy, $53.9 million. What I'm trying to show here is how the levy is split, how it's going to be spread across the different properties within the community. The first is the referendum market value. So, about 53% of our levy next year would be spread across properties using the referendum market value formula. And what that does is it treats all properties the same. It excludes, though, cabins and farms. So, our farmers and our, if there's seasonal recreational property in the district, do not have to pay the taxes that fall under referendum market value. And again, each property is considered the same percentage. So, a house at $200,000 versus a business at $200,000 is taxed the same. Under net tax capacity, that's kind of an equalizing method that the legislature came up with to try to put that fair share weighted towards other types of properties in a different manner than certain properties. So, for example, on our businesses, they weight those at two times the value of a house. So, a business in this category at $200,000 is taxed twice as hard as a house valued at $200,000. And a farm, on the flip side, is half the value of a house. So, a farm is going to get about 50% of the tax that a house would in this category of taxes. Now, the good thing this year, because this category is going down, this is going to benefit our businesses and our agriculture or our farm properties. They're actually, we're going to show you later on, they're going to get a decrease in their taxes this year. Yep. And again, I'll just point out that, again, the 8.9% overall levy increase is not an 8.9% across the board. It's a set of complicated formulas, like I tried to explain there, that it gets weighted based on the type of property. And again, some are going to see a small increase, some are going to see an actual
So, there's really three ways that, three factors that impact the property tax. And that's the board-approved levy. I'll bring you back to when we talked about this in referendum. There's authority that you have for levying without going to the voters. What we proposed back in September, and what we talked about in July, is recommending that the board approves their $166.65 per pupil unit of board-authorized levy. You did, you did exercise, excuse me, this option for payable 2015. If you remember, last year, we actually recommended to you that you under levy or you not exercise this particular portion due to the successful passage of the referendum. It's calculated, as John has talked about, based on our pupil units. Our district has actually seen an increase of 683 pupil units from last school year, 15-16, to the 16-17 school year. A pupil unit in kindergarten through sixth grade, one student equals one pupil unit. In seventh through 12th grade, one student equals 1.2 pupil units. We wanted to draw this down underneath here. We have 164 additional elementary school students. So, this is not, well, it is pupil units in this example, but we have 164 additional students at the elementary level. We have six, or seven fewer middle school students, and we have 443 additional high school students. So, that's how that factors into the formula to give us an increase of 683 pupil units. If you recall, during the referendum, we had that inflation language that was in there. It's approximately projected to be $20 per pupil unit, and that inflationary rate is set by MDE. It's determined to be 2.39%. And that generates that $4.2 million in additional revenue, which we talked about on a few slides back.
So, now, we're going to break it down and just show you three examples of how, if the recommended levy were approved as presented to you, how it would impact our homes and businesses in this community. First off, on a regular residential homestead, if we take that $200,000 line there, we can see that the school tax would go from $791 this school year up to about $807 for next year. So, that's an increase of $15-16 for the year on a $200,000 home. That equates to 1.9% increase. So, again, 8.9% additional money coming into the school district, but that's a 1.9% effect on homeowner.
Excuse me, John?
Yep.
What this doesn't show is if, say, someone's house, market value of property went from $100,000 to $150,000, your increase is going to be higher because the market value went up. And there were a number of residents in, I think, in this community that had the valuation increases as well.
That's correct. It seems like it's...
So, this is a static model. All things considered equal, this is what you'd be getting.
You're right on. Thank you for clarifying that. In our commercial industrial properties, or what we consider as a normal business property, if you take a $500,000 business, there would be a $62 decrease in the property tax, so about a 2% reduction. That kind of goes back to that third view of the levy, how it gets spread. And because of that one category of net tax capacity is going down, that's a win for our businesses this year. So, they are able to actually see a reduction in their school tax next year. And then, our big winners would be our farmers. So, for those few agriculture properties we have in our district, if you take a 160-acre farm valued at roughly $1.28 million, there'd be a $133 decrease in the taxes, so about
Before we go into these last few slides, I wanted to actually pull up a slide that John put together today to address Director Smith's comment about property valuation. I'm going to pull up the one that he... This isn't as formal as we usually do, but you'll get the idea here.
This actually was published in the Post Bulletin last week and prepared by the county, so I can't take credit for this. But this is trying to show the change in taxes, so school, county, and city next year across the different chunks of property. So, in there, the county went through the records and found that 7,814 properties out of the 46,000 properties on the tax roll would see a decrease in their levy. That was, again, city, county, and school. Those properties would be decreasing. There's 9,624 properties that would see a $0 to $100 per year increase, and then 12,620 properties that would see a $100 to $200 annual increase. And again, we're talking school, city, county taxes combined. So, it looks to me that 2/3 of our properties are seeing, you know, $200 or less of an increase next year, if all authorities use their maximum levy authority next year. We've got two more slides to show you here, a little bit of benchmarking that we did.
I'm also showcasing my airplay skills for you. This is a new comparison to you that we brought forward. We are oftentimes emailed or asked, "Where do we compare with cities that are neighboring us?" So, here we have the apples-to-apples. So, this is factoring in the recommendation of the $166 levy up and other districts with what their proposed levy amounts are. So, you can see this is annual school tax on a $200,000 home. And then, we just took a look at various communities that surround us. And you'll see here Rochester is $875, and then you'll see the communities on either side of that. Also, John took the comparable districts that are utilized in our audit and to show, again, where Rochester was with respect to comparable districts.
So, now, at this point, we would take questions from the board, and then, when you're ready to turn it over to the public, we'll let them make their comments.
Ms. Workman? Yeah. At the very beginning, you talked about the increase in the tax base. Did that include just the city of Rochester, or was that everything that our school district encompasses?
It would be all properties that are labeled Rochester Public Schools, so they might have an Orinoco or a...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. May I ask one more?
Yeah.
And then, one follow-up question. For the residential properties, does each property have the same ratio between the school, the city, and the county taxes in terms of proportion? Like, could you say 40% of the bill, of your tax bill is going to be city, 40? I realize I'm probably putting you on the spot with this, but...
Yes. And I wouldn't be able to answer that. I have not done that comparison, so...
Other questions?
I really like the slide, "Major Factors Impacting Property Tax." I think it's your number 14 in your airplay skills. I've just tried to recall, when we do a levy at 4.2 million, there's also tax equalization, something that the state does. Could you just kind of give us a description of what is that for folks watching at home to understand what equalization, how that affects us?
Correct. So, there's formulas behind the scene that help, again, address the size of your tax base or the power perhaps your tax base has compared to another district. And they try to equalize that across the state and make sure that the burden is not excessive in one community versus the other. And so, then, they will apply some state aids to help offset the local property tax. So, the revenue remains the same, but it might come from state more than local taxpayers. And in our community, because we have, again, a pretty robust tax base, we don't always get as much aid benefit as some of the other communities, I've noticed.
And then, I think I remember it was about a half million less. If they gave us the same that everyone gets, they kind of philosophically took some away. That's how I understood it.
I'm not sure if I, off the top of my head, I wouldn't be able to give you a precise calculation on that.
Can I just kind of follow up on that? So, can you go through then the slides 19 and 20 then? So, those...
What would be the top header of the 19?
District-to-district comparison.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. That's more directly...
Yeah. So, with what Dan was talking about, so, okay, Pine Island, just because it's the top one. So, it's got $1,148. So, in Rochester's at $875 for the $200,000 home. So, where does the...
Equalization. So, this is, this is net of that. So, all those aids have been applied, and this is actually what the homeowners should see if they open their tax statement. So, a $200,000 home in Pine Island is probably $300-ish dollars more per year to live there than Rochester.
And John, would some of that have to do, because both of those districts just recently did a referendum for facility...
They're starting to pay for likely new schools.
So, that's probably why they're up that high.
And on the flip side of that, Plainview Elgin Melville had a failed referendum last year.
And ours includes our levy. Okay. Thank you. That was...
Now, the spread, the only caveat there is the spread is based on last year's tax base. So, that's why the $875 doesn't exactly match out what we said it's going to be, because we use last year's tax base for all the communities, because I didn't have their 2017 numbers. But the levy amount is accurate. That's right off the same MDE report Rochester gets.
Other questions? Comments? I've got one. So, the levy as proposed will raise $53.9 million?
Correct.
And that's 4.4 than what we raised last year?
4.4 million more than the current year.
Where does that compare when we, is that in line with projection, what we're going to need, or is that in, is that more?
So, if we go back to our scenarios that we presented in the summer when we lasted our five-year forecast, that was that scenario number four that said if the state gives a 2% increase and if we use the $166.65, that's what would... if the state gives a 2% increase and if we use the 166.65, that's what would ride us out to 1920 without any major need for additional revenue or cuts to expenditures.
Emphasize major.
Major.
And we'll come back a couple meetings from now and give you probably a 2%, 1%, and 0% scenario, so you know how that's going to impact. And as John is saying, this is based on last year, that we're going to get 2% for the next five years.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to be clear where we were, so we stay in sync with what we, what we said.
I have two questions. One of them is on the slide about major factors impacting property tax, talking about the number of additional students that we have in Rochester, and then we talk about pupil units. That's different.
It is different. Yep. So, those high school students, those 443 is times 1.2.
Okay. I think that's an important thing, thank you, to get out. And then, John, I have another question for you, and this isn't about school. And I, so, I don't know if you're going to have this, this information, but I know that especially this time of year, people get very concerned about taxes, and the taxes they're getting everywhere. There was just an article in the newspaper, I think, about Rochester Business, who was very concerned that their taxes were going up by, it seems to me, 180% or something. Can you, can you explain how that can happen?
Sure. What I'm guessing there is that there was a major revaluation of the property.
Okay. Okay.
And the law also requires that when there's a certain amount of transactions in a certain class of property, that the successor has to go in and reestablish the value, the market values. And that's happened a couple of times to the commercial properties in, in Rochester. And that's where you've seen these huge increases, and it relates to the, the properties being, you know, sold in the market, in the marketplace, so...
Okay, thank you. That makes sense, and I think that's important too, because people get really alarmed when they see those kind of numbers. Like, is this going to happen to everywhere? Is this where we're going? And clearly, that doesn't apply to the situation we're talking about here.
It would seem the majority of houses in this community are not going to have anything near that, based on the data that's out there.
Right.
The exact percentages on the tax statement in the bottom right-hand corner, so you can see how much of a percentage difference you would see as a homeowner.
We're, I think, like, we're relatively a third of, of the overall tax. Probably no matter how you cut your, your tax bill, you'll look at the schools, it'll be a relatively a third of that total tax bill and the percentage of the, of the total increases. So, I know in my own case, my, my property taxes are going up 16 and 1/2% overall, but most of that is due to the market valuation changing. That's not, that's, that's not in our control that affects the, that, that's just the total of the taxable we have to work with. Which, if those values are going up, then you're reducing the amount of what we're actually levying, levying against that base that's, that's growing. So, it's complicated, and it's easy for people to get confused. I, I understand that.
Are there any other que, Mr.?
Yeah, I, I think I'm just continuing that same thought using slide 16 that you have. It says homestead residential.
Can you give me the header?
Homestead residential.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to see if I follow the conversation. If I had a house that used to be worth $100,000, and a bunch of my friends have great houses, and they sold them all, and now my house is worth $150,000, I'm going to go from 358 to 588, mostly because they came in and reassessed my house to be valued at $150,000.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So, I would, I would see shockingly, this portion anyway, going from 358 to 588, because somebody thinks my house now sells for a lot more than it would have sold for last year.
Correct.
Thank you.
That's accounting for most of the increase that people probably seen if they're getting one. It's a, it's a double-edged sword. Your house is worth more, but, you know, if you want to sell it, but if you don't want to sell it, you're going to pay more to live there in taxes.
And that was the other, the other, the last question I had was on the 80-acre farm, which is two more slides now. They're still paying $600. So, I, I think we, as a school district, need to be extremely appreciative of all the folks who pay money. Now, an 80-acre farm doesn't have any value until you sell it, and they still are paying $600 each. So, to all those folks doing that, we know that's, that's an important part of our, how we get money. So, so thanks. But 80-acre farm, $600, 160 is about 1,200. Right? It's 1,166. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
I would still, I, I think I say this every year, but I personally, I think it bears repeating, and that is that as a school board, we, we don't have much control over what we get in from, well, certainly not what we get in for the state, from the state, but even setting property taxes. Whereas the city and the county really have a lot more freedom in terms of how much they raise their taxes, and they do not need to have a voter referendum in order to do so, like we just did. So, since we're all on a big thank you kick, I once again thank you to the community for having approved this referendum, because it's really going to be so beneficial to our students to not be, to not have to make budget cuts.
Ms. Becker.
I'm still a bit confused, and I don't know, I mean, this isn't, this doesn't directly tie to the, the taxes for the, for the school district and the levy and all that. But, so, we were just talking about, so, Dan, your example about, you know, you had your $100,000 house, and now it's a $150,000 house. So, you went from the 358, you know, to the 588. So, it's a, that's a big, that's a big jump. So, my question is, how does, because we've talked about that when the tax base is increasing, and that would be, that's a small example of the task, tax base increasing, right? And that happens over the whole big, over the city and everything. So, then, really, how does that actually benefit the taxpayer?
Because the new properties, so the new businesses and the new homes that hit the rolls for the first time are a chunk of that increase too. And so, they're absorbing the levy and taking it away from others that had been paying it previously. So, that part of it is value changes, and part of it is actually just flat-out new properties that were never taxed before.
Or they were taxed in a different way.
In a different way, some of it's raw land.
So, yeah, so like, all the, all the land that used to be farmland, and then they build houses on it. So, okay, I don't, I, it's...
Well, I think that, you know, the bottom line is no matter how, the nuances of how you get to the end point, that is how many dollars you're actually going to pay in taxes, there's a lot of nuance to that. And the fact is that you, what we are seeing, homes out there, they are getting double-digit increases in, in their taxes. We need to be cognizant of that, need to be aware of that, we need to be mindful, mindful of that as we exercise our, this role as a school board to, you know, to, to set the levy. That's why I'm asking, was asking the question earlier. You know, we, we set a whole set of, of assumptions, if you will, before we had that, that referendum we passed, in about terms of how many dollars we were going to need in order to get us through that 19 and 20. So, you know, as, what, what I'm looking for is, are, you know, because we've had more increase in market value and because of the levy, are we going to end up with more than what we said we, we needed, or about the same, or only the same? Or, or, to me, that's an important distinction here, because, because the market values do significantly increase people's property taxes, those that have increasing market value. Those who have a market value staying the same, or going down, or, or in a mark, or in a classification that has the, the schedule, how the taxes get, there's actually a reduction put into the formula that way. You know, there's lots of nuances that. But the bottom, at the line, at the end of the day, when I get my statement, I'm either paying more money, about the same, or, you know, le, less money. And in most cases, people pay more taxes because, because of the market valuation. Not, not most, most people don't see a de, a decrease in their, in their tax. I'm, one of the point of making this is that it's very compli, complicated, and we sit here and we talk about, we're only doing this percent, we're only doing this, but we're only in charge of part of the, the taxing system, and, you know, we have to raise, we, we pay a given amount of money to that, to that formula and to that tax system, and then it plays itself out through all the, through all the nuances to that. So, it's, it's, it's probably way more complicated than what it, what it needs to be or should be, but at the same time, it is what it is, and the legislature's in charge of creating that. Ms. Workman, did you want to...
Yeah, maybe I misunderstood something you just said, but I'll clarify it with John, is the amount of mo, the dollars that we are raising from the referendum, those dollars do not increase except for the inflation piece.
Correct.
So, even though my property value might go up or down, that doesn't affect the total referendum dollars.
That's correct.
It's just the other piece that is affected.
Only thing that would affect it would be inflation or more kids.
Right. Right. That's it? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up the meeting to comments from the public. Do you have a couple of guidelines we ask you to follow? That's when you, you come up, we ask you to state your name and your home address, and if you can limit your comments to three to five minutes, that's fine. You know, be succinct as you can, I guess, is what we're really trying to say. But at this time, we'd receive comments from the public. Is there anybody out there who would like to, to address the board at this time regarding to the taxes? If so, please feel free to step forward and give us your name and address and speak. I'll ask once. I'll ask twice. Come on up.
Dan Nass, 1846 35th Street Northwest. You know, I don't mind paying my taxes. I think it's a patriotic thing to do, but I just have one question and maybe one comment to go along with that. You mentioned you didn't know the tax structure. You mentioned about the house valuations, depending upon the value of the house, what percent of change that is going to occur? Do you know what that currently is and how that is going to be in overall numbers rather than just percentage of change?
Are, so, are you asking that you want to know what the market, total market value?
Yes, because there's, it sounded like a very complex
Yeah.
...model that is using to come up with a number. And I'm just curious, if you're looking at a house that is valued at $75,000, including the homestead, versus something that is $250,000, what overall percent of tax rate would that be for each of those houses? And I'm looking at the increases, and also for businesses too, in the level of change. And at least, could you go back to the business, please? Is that possible?
The, the slide, I think you're referencing the slide that had the actual values.
Yes, and kind of unit change.
So, you're looking to see the slide that's labeled "commercial slash industrial"
Yes, please.
As the header.
I think that was on...
And so, so they, so those are, yeah.
I don't remember them offhand. I just remember the residential, I'm sorry.
See if we can get it up there for you.
So, the commercial one will actually be negative, interestingly enough, because of the nuance. If you're looking at, like, the homesteaded residential, the percent increases is on the far left. It's hard to see on the small screen, but the proposed percent increases for like $100,000, $150,000 is on the far right as a percentage.
So, so it's, oh, they're negative. I, I was looking for the...
Yeah, decrease.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, there's just a minus sign. Sorry, they didn't do it.
Which is unusual, is that correct? That doesn't happen most years.
Right. Now, that same might not play out if it's city tax or county tax, but because of the way the school formula works, we're, there would be a decrease on our businesses.
Okay, thank you. I think I remember it the way I thought I did initially, so, thank you. It seems like the tax rate, as far as for the commercial, industrial, and residential, they seem to be pretty regressive rather than a progressive tax. And this is only for the change. I don't know what the overall rate would be, and I would be really curious to see what that would be, because at least looking at these changes, they seem to be regressive.
Yeah. Okay. Is there anything else?
No, thank you very much. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Ask him once? Ask him twice? Okay. Three times? We will clo, close the...
No, no.
What? What are you going to do? Close comments? I know, that's what I was going to go to next.
I've heard it.
I was closing the public comment.
No, no, I was just closing the public comment, and then move on to item 7.03, and that is to tell you that the property tax levy for the school district payable in 2017 will be certified by the board at its regular meeting scheduled for December 13th. So, that'll be next week at 5:30 PM here, here in the Edison Board. So, with that announcement, we have no other business, and I will adjourn this meeting at 6:44 PM.